Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting, Monday, June the 13th. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could remain standing for the invocation by Pastor David Lydic, Midlands Bible Baptist Church, 2407 Chandler Road East.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, for the privilege tonight, and good evening to you all. Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. I thank you for a city council that yet knows the importance, Lord, of seeking your face, your counsel, your help. And, Lord, I certainly pray you'd impart that to them in these days in our country. Lord, we're mindful of the events recently in Florida and other places in our country. It seems as though we're under attack. And, Lord, I pray that you'd help our country, you'd give our leaders such as these here tonight understanding and real wisdom, Lord, that we need in these days. We pray for protection from this violent and vicious ism that seems to be plaguing not only our country but the world. And, Lord, again, we just ask for your help. Tonight, Lord, I ask that you'd help each one of these council members and our mayor. I pray you'd give them grace, patience, again, wisdom. Help them, Lord, to be committed to that which is right, not that which is necessarily politically expedient or convenient, but rather, again, Lord, that which is right according to your word. And so I commit their care to you and your help, Lord, that you'd impart to them tonight. And I'll praise you and thank you for it in Jesus' precious name. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you. Pastor Lydic. Item number two. Sabrina, could you please call and roll?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes, and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Carmichael.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Questions, concerns? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C is under consent as well as 3D. Item number four is also under consent for approval of claims. Item five, special presentation. 5A, update of the Larkin Pool Assessment and Renovation Designs. Mr. Roberts.
Well, good evening, everybody. We've been, for the last few months, we've been going over some different concepts on what we could do to maintain the swimming pools that we have here with the structural conditions that they're in. So I put together a real short PowerPoint presentation of some of the things we've come up with, a couple of the concepts. I've got Andy Smith here from Larkin, and so he's going to go through the slides and kind of give you all the nuts and bolts of it. And then at the end of it, we have some finance numbers to show you, and then we can have a discussion after that.
Thanks, Jeff. So we were asked to focus on Casio and Gilbert pools, and I'm going to go through Casio first, and then we'll get to Gilbert. The first thing we were asked to do was to look at the bathhouses. Now, the bathhouses, for Casio and Gilbert certainly are in fairly good structural condition given their age. The structural walls, the roof system, and the foundations appear to be in fairly good shape. So the intent of both Casio and Gilbert was to look at the interior of the bathhouse. And they did not have the adequate toilet fixture counts to meet the current state regulations. So the intent was to look at whether we could gut those bathhouses, basically take them down to the structural walls and take out the floors and just reconfigure the floor plan to account for the bathroom fixtures that would be required for a pool basically the size of what is there. We were able to do so at Casio. You can see that this bathhouse is fairly tight, but it does meet the minimum fixture counts required for the facility we considered. Now, Casio, as I know has been discussed in previous council meetings, had a dive well which is not compliant with today's standards. And so in the concept that we looked at, we chose to take the dive well out to see what we could do within the existing structure without a dive well. And the concept we came up with is shown here where you take the existing pool and you actually build a pool inside of it. And for the dive well itself, you would fill the cavity between the bottom of the dive well and the new floor of the plunge pool, and you'll see the concept in a second. There's a distance of five to six feet that you have to fill with crushed rock. But in building a pool in this manner, a new pool inside of an existing pool, there is certainly a number of savings associated with it. You save in the demolition of the existing pool, and by keeping the new facility within the footprint of the existing facility, there's a lot of site work savings to be realized in the construction. So this is the Casio pool concept. The first thing I will bring to your attention is the magenta or the pinkish lines that show the outline of the existing pools. You have to look a little bit closer, or at least I do, to see the baby pool to the But can everybody see that beyond the L-shaped existing pool to the left? That's where the baby pool used to be. Now, the other thing about where it is today and would be removed in this concept, the thing, Casio sits on a hill, as I'm sure most of you know, and there is a deck level coming off the bathhouse that is about eight foot higher than the pool deck itself. And currently, that's not, there is no ADA accessible route from the bathhouse down to the pool. So we had to consider that as well in our concept. And we constructed a ramp that starts up near the stairs, runs westerly, and then turns south and comes down across where the existing pool, baby pool sits. Now, to keep the facility within the existing boundaries of the existing facility, again, as a cost-saving measure, we have converted the baby pool into a separate section of the rest of the pool so that there's one body of water. That means there's one mechanical system. However, we provide the appropriate age-appropriate water depths and add some play features that will be attractive to the age that's currently using the traditional baby pools. So I'll walk through this concept and show you some of those elements. The first thing, in that shallow area, we'll have deck sprays immediately adjacent to the beach area. And this entire area of shallow water will be a nice replacement and upgrade from the traditional baby pool that you have. We're also proposing to add some features within that shallow water. The elements on the top are dumping buckets, and the element on the bottom is an interactive element that attracts two- to four- or five-year-olds where they manipulate devices to move water around, and it's a nice educational tool and really keeps the young kids engaged. So then you step down from a depth of about 12 inches of water from the shallow baby area into the swimmable water, which is a depth of about three to five feet. We've provided some play elements for the bigger kids in those areas. We have floatables which are chained to the floor of the pool, shown in the upper picture, and you can add a basketball goal as another play element in that water. Then lastly, we have converted the old dive well into the plunge pool area. The slide shown there in the upper left-hand corner are just one of several ideas. That is actually a two-slide structure that's shown in the photograph, similar to what's on the plan. It's got a serpentine open flume slide, and then a little bit faster speed slide for the thrill-seeking youngsters. And then, as always very appropriate, to have plenty of shade, and we've allowed for three shade structures on the deck. So now we shift to the Gilbert pool. We were charged with doing the very same thing at Gilbert, gut the interior and reconfigure it so that the bathroom fixtures, one, meet the count for the current state code, plus provide ADA accessibility. I don't think I mentioned that before, but we did make the bathhouse at Casio ADA compliant from a standpoint of both passing through it as well as using all of the bathroom fixtures available to other patrons. So we were able to make the Gilbert bathhouse reconfigured in that same manner. So the Gilbert pool is all on the same level as far as the deck, so we didn't have any, really any issues to address as far as ADA accessibility down to the pool because the bathhouse is already at that level. But what we did was to take the same concept as we had for Casio to build a pool within a pool. Because this pool is slightly smaller, actually quite a bit smaller than the Casio pool, we extended the shallow depth area out towards where the baby pool used to be, as you can see to the right. We chose to keep as best we could the same elements in this pool as at Casio. You have the beach area, as I've already explained, the same elements for the younger kids, same play elements in the three to five-foot water. And then we have the same water slide in this concept, and we have plenty of shade along the pool.
So that's the concept we've come up with. If you remember during budgeting, we were, for each pool, we were given a million dollars to try to rehab them. And so we looked at that, trying to find the best thing we could do with them. But unfortunately, we end up with a cost decimate of each pool. Gilbert would be approximately 2.1 million to do this concept. Casio would be 2.4. So that 5 million that was allotted over budget, the 4.5 million of it was just spent on the two pools. So, excuse me, Douding would have to kind of sit in the background for right now. And Sun Valley, the way it's constructed, is this concept would not work with it because of the way it's built. So that's where we're at today on what our estimate is on these. One of the other options, too, then, to look at is, you know, we're giving 5 million for these. We had 4 million for voter approval to do an aquatic center. So the other option would be then, do we move forward with this concept, or do we go back again and look at, do we take that 9 million and invest it into more of a centralized aquatic center? So those are the two options we're kind of throwing out there. But I guess we're here kind of for your direction then on what you think is the best route for us to go on it.
I do have a question. She just told me. I have a question, the question being, when you build a pool within a pool, what type of longevity do you look at? What is the average lifespan?
Well, the average lifespan, the average lifespan of a pool, you should expect 30 to 40 good years, and 40 to 50 before you really have to start looking at replacing.
Those the same for building a pool within a pool?
Yeah, that's really irrelevant to the lifespan of the pool. You build it in such a way that the pool that you've left underneath the old one is not, doesn't affect the performance or the longevity of the new pool.
I actually saw this same concept at Black Butte Ranch, Oregon, where they took an older pool, and they built the pool within the pool, and they did the walk-in and made it ADA accessible, basically had the same features. That pool easily increased traffic tenfold, and it's a wonderful family pool, so well done. I'm really impressed with what you came up with for the money.
Another option I forgot to mention, too, is if we go with this concept with retroing the two other ones, that 4 million could also be, if we still want to go to voter approval, could go for building a new facility at Southwest Bellevue. That would be the entire of the parking lot, the infrastructure, the pool, the bathhouse, everything, which will probably be pretty close to that 4 million range to do another one just like these with all the added things to it. And one other thing, too, is I got an email from Jim Shada yesterday, and for the last three days, we've had record numbers at the swimming pools. We've had an average of 900 people at the four remaining pools.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. A question. I appreciate what you did in combining the kiddie pool with the...
It often said of on. Combining, so you've got one filtration system for the economies of scale, obviously. However, let me read what I have here and then welcome your comment. It says, "The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Annual Report cited a study of more than 48,600 public pools that were tested, and close to 80% had at least one safety or hygiene violation. One in eight of the pools was so dirty that it had to be closed immediately after inspection." Pools meant for young children and infants, this is the part I'm referring to, were especially risky with one in five being closed right after inspection. And particularly E. coli, very young children have no bowel control, they wear diapers often in there, but it's problematic. So I'm thinking, if we've got a combined system, even though we've got chemicals in the water, they found there were still a lot of contaminants in the pools. How does that get addressed? Well, of course, the studies you're referring to are for a number of existing, or for existing facilities, a number of which are going to have been built some years prior. Today, we build the pools to the model aquatic health code and to the state standards, which are quickly catching up with the CDC's model aquatic health code, and have a number of things that have been added to the code in recent years to address those very issues. One is the turnover time required in shallow water where children play. And even if this pool is a single system, we would zone the pool in such a way that our turnover in that shallow water would probably be six times, six to eight times faster than the water in the deeper portions. And that's not to say we're going to slow the turnover there down, it's just that's how quick we're going to turn over that water in that shallow zone by pulling it out quicker and putting more in. And besides just the chlorine addition that we've always had and will continue to have, we'll have secondary disinfection to deal with those pathogens such as E. coli, such as Giardia and Cryptosporidia, which is really the most dangerous. We'll have secondary disinfection in the way of UV. And many of those pools that would have been referenced in that study don't have those elements of the quick turnover and the secondary disinfection. The thought that you break the pools into different bodies of water is an operational versus a construction cost issue. Certainly, you can have a fecal incident in either body of water, in which case management has to address that. The CDC has very specific guidelines on how that is to be addressed. If you have separate bodies of water, it allows one body of water to stay open while the other one is closed and is treated, whereas in this situation, you close the entire facility. So either way, you can, it can be managed in a safe manner that is current with today's best practices. Why wouldn't we put in the splash pad instead of the kiddie pool so you don't have to have all that additional expense and all the additional equipment and safeguards? Well, that certainly is an option, and that is an option at the discretion of your board, of your community. We find that that is an option that many, many communities have chosen to take. There is an element of, when you take the little one out of water and you don't offer water in your community until they are big enough to be in three feet, three feet or more of water, then there's an element lost of teaching the children in the community a culture of being in water. Thank you.
Mr. Burlowitz.
I think also with our current pools, Jeff, if I correct, the baby pools do not have actually, in filtration systems, do they? What type of filtration do they have?
Yeah, they have filtration. But they're not, they're not separated.
Yeah, they're not separated now. You have two, I mean, the fact is, you have two separate bodies of water, but they're operated off of a single filtration system.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the work you guys have done on this. I do appreciate it, and I have been involved with it with the passage of time on this issue. I support what you're doing here. I think that as a community, there's no better bonding mechanism for children than to be able to go to the pool in the summertime. And I will support this. I also want to evaluate how we as a community move forward, maybe not with the magnitude of a regional park such as Plasmouth or even Papillion, but some mechanism that we evaluate, something that's contiguous to all parts of the city that children can go and enjoy as we move through this process. I don't know if that's going to be this year, Jeff. I don't know if that's going to be five years down the road. Financing is surely going to be an issue, and we have monumental tasks in front of us as far as operational costs for the city outside of pools. So as the council, we're going to have to address that issue, but I appreciate all the work you've done and put into this situation to keep our pools open, number one, and to move forward with upgrades that, in my eyes, are beneficial to our children.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for putting this together. You know, the part of the concern for me is, you know, I look at these pools and I try to, as, are these kids coming by, are they walking, are they riding bikes, or are there a lot of parents there? And to me, I just think that these pools have to be accessible to our kids, of which I think we provide that, especially, you know, on this side of town. And I know eventually we'll resolve issues in Southwest Bellevue. But I like what I'm seeing. I just think that these pools are valuable to a community. I know I drive by Fremont and some other locations, you see big water parks, and I think they look great, they look fine. Maybe that is an answer down the road, but I just think we need to move forward and get these pools in a good condition to where we can get more use out of them. If down the road, there's an opportunity that will provide this city of doing something bigger and better, maybe we pursue it then. But I just think these pools are too valuable to our community. I know that we've had people say, you know, should we be transitioning over to splash pads? And I know there's pluses there, but I just think something like this is more adequate for a mom to take kids that are, you know, four, eight, and 12 years old and all have something to do at this pool. And I just think that that allows a better use, more use, and more practical for our residents. So I'd like to have more discussion, and I'd like to sit down and talk to you about some of these things. I wrote down some notes here, and maybe just talk about some of the stuff that you presented here today. But I like what you have presented, and I think we need to at least, at the bare minimum, let's move forward and do a couple pools. Now, I don't know which are the best pools. I know you picked Gilbert. I don't know what our most-used pools are. I don't know how much time you need to do this. Would we have to shut down a pool for the summer, or can it be done in the fall and the spring when we're not in use, or how we would do it? But I think a full-service pool is still something that our community needs.
Well, the reason we chose Casio and Gilbert is because they have the real estate to be able to do this concept in. Douding, we still have some doubts that maybe this will even work there. Plus, Douding was kind of in the middle of these two, which, if, say, in the future it gets phased out, then you'll at least have two other ones that's in that vicinity for that part of town. And the other thing, too, is our hopes are to maybe get moving after the pools close this season because we're probably going to need up till next summer to get these constructed. So the longer we wait on making other decisions and going back and forth on it, it's going to push us back another year, potentially, without having to close any.
And Jeff, one thing that was, that was a big concern, is the loss of water at our pools, and I'm assuming that's going to be addressed in this renovation, because we're talking a significant amount of water being...
Yeah, the whole plumbing will be redone on these new ones.
Thank you.
Mr. Burlowitz.
Well, I'll actually defer to the two council members over there first.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you very much. I very enjoyed the presentation. I kind of agreed with Councilman Cook. I've lived in Bellevue an awfully long time, and I don't think, we've hardly done anything to those pools for about as long as I can remember. Even taking my kids over to Wake Robin, and I always said, "Where are the chairs?" Well, there's no chairs, you have to bring your own chair. I can take my daughter-in-law and a lot of young families that have grandkids, whatever, and they head to Plasmouth or Papillion, and then they go to eat in the restaurants there, and they go out to all the stuff around that area, and then they come back here. So I think we're missing a lot by not going forward with these two pools. And I agree with Paul. I'd say start with two, and if we have to do four, and then probably look in the southwest, maybe something out that way that, that'll start somewhere, though.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate what Jeff's comments were with respect to Recreation Director's numbers, from June 10th through the 12th, Sun Valley had 842 participants. Casio had 660. Douding had 633, and Gilbert had 464. We removed the diving boards from the pools. I was in disagreement with that because I believe that when those pools were constructed, they did comply with the code that was in effect at the time, and we have never not used those pools. So the decision was made based on our legal department giving advice to the city on the liability issues that we faced, and the administration made a decision on removing the diving boards. From my perspective, the numbers that Jim provided to us don't show that removal of a diving board has had a negative impact on those pools. It's hot, those kids want to play in the water, and they're going to the pools.
Councilman Blood.
You rose to the challenge. This is why we do strategic planning, this is why we did the budget. You're able to renovate two pools, and we're not just putting our finger in the dyke, we're renovating these pools and making them so they're going to be a destination point. They're not going to be a water park, but they're going to be a lot of fun, and they're also going to be a nice place for the adults to go with the adult amenities like the shade. But the other point that I think sounds confusing that I want to make sure we bring up is that the splash pads aren't meant to take the place of the pools. They're meant to bring another amenity eventually to Southwest Bellevue, but right now, one launches in Northwest Bellevue, and there will be another one next year, I believe. We're doing what we can do within the budgetary guidelines that we have. We don't want to go back to where, I don't know if my mic's, oh, there we are, we don't want to go back to where we were at when Dawn and I came on the council and put Bellevue back in the hole. We're staying within our budget and doing what we can do as quickly as we can, and I think we should be very proud of what they've presented, and the fact that it's been very, everybody's been an active participant in one way or another. I wish it could be more, but I find it hard to believe that taxpayers don't want us to be good stewards of their funds, and that the fact that we're not just going to stop at those two, that we're going to continue with splash pads, we're going to continue to do what we can within the budget when we plan the next budget. I think we're being good stewards. And so, again, I want to say, well done. I've seen that exact same example in another pool, as I stated before. I've seen that exact same example in another pool, as I stated before, and it's a beautiful thing. We, there, that's a pool that we're going to be really proud of, or two pools we're going to be really proud of.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to make some general comments. I support doing what we can to keep the existing pools open and available to kids. I think there are some areas of caution, especially when we talk about budgets, that we need to pay attention to. One, the most obvious is outdoor pools are only usable by our children for eight to nine weeks of the year. Schools are now coming back into session the middle of August. The summers are getting shorter and schools are going longer. So we're investing huge sums of money for a very short window of time. Also, for those of you who may still have it, our aquatics study has a lot of very good information, and I would encourage people to read it. One of the things in it says only 16% of the population actually uses the pools. For eight to nine weeks of the year, 16% of the population is going to be getting millions of dollars. If I'm going to invest millions of dollars, I kind of like what I get year-round from a library that teaches a whole lot. Now, I think kids need to have aquatics and need to have pools. So I'd like to see some partnerships with the schools or with somebody else, so it's not just the city for these few weeks of the year for only 16% of the population. When Offit, it was reported in the World Herald, did their study, they said it's going to cost $8 million to build a new pool. We're talking $2.5 million just to renovate one pool. We're talking some pretty serious money when we've got a fire department that we need to staff, when we've got police and other very essential kinds of expenses that we're going to have to do, that we're going to have to make some pretty difficult decisions on. Regarding any kind of aquatic center, I don't know if people have been reading the paper, but again, I like show and tell. Wonderful new one at the zoo. The zoo has invested huge sums of money. Bellevue can never compete with the zoo. We'll never be able to do that. Funplex, just last year, invested $5 million in theirs. We're never going to compete with them. We've got Papillion. We've got other aquatic centers that can invest huge sums of money. It becomes a, a race. It becomes, uh, who can get the latest and who can attract the most. And the kids that go to these big places have cars. They're mobile. Those kids can drive anywhere. So when we talk about investing huge sums of money in a regional aquatics park that's only going to be open for a few weeks of the year, I'm thinking, I don't know if that's wise financial investing. And I hope the public looks at that. Again, when you go back to this aquatic study, if you read the comments from the public, we need a spray ground. We need splash parks. We need a splash park. Sprink, sprinkle parks, sprinkle parks, sprinkle playgrounds, splash parks, splash pool, scattered splash pad. And then there were a few other comments like, not sure Bellevue can afford to build. Get the fiscal house in order first, especially in light of building a convention center and what the needs are with Fort Crook and Old Town. There was only, I believe, at most, two comments in here about building any kind of aquatic center. But there were at least three saying, that's an awful lot of money. So I raised these issues not because I'm against swimming. I ran a swimming pool. I like swimming. I think kids need pools. But I think we need to partner with schools, the school system. If we're going to build one, let's build a good one. Let's enclose it so it can be used year-round. Let's not invest millions of dollars in something that's only usable for a few weeks of the year by a very limited number of people. And I think these considerations certainly need to be taken into account. Thank you for your attention.
Councilman Blood.
I don't disagree with anything that Councilman Preister said, because facts are facts. However, I think the one thing that we haven't brought up is that one of the reasons that Bellevue is such a great place to live and raise our families is because we understand the importance of providing activities for our young people here in Bellevue so they're not out causing trouble all summer long. From the lead activity center to the pools, to the library, depending on the age of your child, we want to try and keep them active, keep them involved in activities, be it softball, soccer, whatever, to make sure that our community continues to be a great place to live and raise our children. And so how do you put a price tag on something like that? And I feel that we are actively finding solutions to fund our police and fire. I don't know what will happen with that, and that's obviously a priority and also a quality of life issue. Is it expensive to maintain pools? It is. But look at all the young families that we have coming into Bellevue. And it's like the Associated Press said two weeks ago, we are the fastest-growing community in the state of Nebraska. But we have to sometimes put on our big point pants and decide, is this an issue that we want to, is this a project that we want to pay for or not pay for? Is there a small percentage of people that use this? Absolutely. But the vast majority of people that are using this are, are children. And we make it cost-effective, so even children from lower-income families can participate, just like we do for most of our sporting activities here in Bellevue. We're talking about an amenity that keeps our youth activated, keeps them out of trouble, makes the police not have to worry about what they're doing during the summer as well, because that's when they usually do get in trouble, is when they have time on their hands. And so I just want to say on the record that I'm not big about spending money, but we budgeted for this. And we have to weigh this with the, the true price of the amenity, the true value of the amenity. And the true value of the amenity is that we're engaging our youth, and that's never a negative thing. And so, again, although I, I don't disagree with what was just said, this is one of those gray areas where as a parent and a grandparent, I know the importance of having these amenities for our children.
Mr. Burlowitz.
Yeah, just a couple points. We know we have pools currently that have issues. Structural issues, leakage issues. So those, those pools, those issues aren't going to get better. We know they're going to deteriorate, so we can't ignore moving ahead with a plan to address these. And I think what's been laid out and what I've heard from a number of council members, it just appears to be a good concept to pursue to retain the pools that we've sought to retain. And if we're going to do it, though, there is a time element. And I think it's really important, there's a council, you, you, there'd be a motion either tonight or pretty soon to decide if we're going to go forward in order to get this done, because we still have to move forward to go out for specs, for bids. The way you do it, I've been through this before. You close the pool, as soon as you close it, you want to be ready to roll, to take advantage of the fall into the spring with, with the intent of at least having it open like early, mid-June timeframe. I've been through a major pool rebuild, and that's about the amount it'll take. So I guess at this point, time does become important.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to open it up for the public comments. If any would like to do so, it's, I know there are people out here that would like to make comments.
Second. Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. I think I probably have had more experience in pools than anybody else here. We lived across from Rockford Pool. My two oldest children swim, can swim in the pool leagues. We, we could walk down to the pools. It was a great place to go. My, both my son and daughter became state champs in high school at Westside. They became national champs in college, and they got some scholarships because they were swimming. The thing is that we've been ignoring this for a long time. I've talked about this a number of years ago, and we just ignored it. I don't see not going ahead and starting, getting some pools going because people, like I said before, come here for, to live. They look for the things for their families to do. They don't come here. They go to, they go to Papillion. They go to La Vista. They'll go to Springfield. They'll go someplace where, or Plath Smith where they have this type of amenities. And we just delayed this way too long. We should have been doing this six, seven, eight, 10 years ago and starting on it. And it's nice you're doing it now, but it's kind of, it's, it's kind of like just putting it off and kicking the can down the road. And, and so this is a time to at least get some pools going. I'm not sure. Have they had any leagues down here for pools, for swimming? I really don't know. Way back, we came down, my, in fact, my daughter, we came from Minnesota, and she swam her first meet down at, in Offit, at the base down there, at the swim meet. And she won the backstroke. And that was a, we just got there in time from Minnesota. And, and this is, this has been a big part of their lives, both, both in grade school, high school, and college. So, and swimmers don't get in trouble. I mean, all the ath, all, all the athletes I know, I think you won't, you won't hear much about swimmers having any kind of a problem. So I think we should go ahead and get going on this. Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this would be appropriate. I'll just ask this. Would it be appropriate for, maybe on our next agenda, that we vote to submit it out for proposals? Or how should we proceed?
Well, yeah, I, I wouldn't want, want to wait any longer than that. You can remember that's going to be, it'll be June 27th.
I mean, is that appropriate?
But, and I also know that you won't be here and the mayor won't be here, so.
Well, you, you'd have my vote for it.
I don't think we can count that.
Councilman Blood.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, we approve moving forward on two pools tonight and give Public Works permission to, to move forward and do what they need to do so we can stay within that window of time.
Second.
Oh, second.
Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Roberts.
Just to make one comment. Larkin is already under contract for design of these pools.
So I make that motion?
So we have a motion. We need a second.
My only comment is this isn't on for any action. I, to, the difficulty also that I have is, is don't we need to tighten this concept up a little bit better?
I think the motion is just to move forward.
Yeah, I guess.
To move, okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Burlowitz.
I guess, as, as Jeff indicated, Larkin's under contract. They'll prepare an actual design. That design will need to come back to you anyway. But this will allow us to move forward. Otherwise, they're retained, we have concepts, but we need something more concrete that we'll move forward on, and that's, that's what you need.
We have a motion by Councilman Blood. A second by Mr. Hanson. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I support this, and I'm going to vote for it. But I think before we move ahead with others, we've got a concentration of essentially four pools in a small, old-town area. We haven't addressed what happens in either north or southwest Bellevue. And we need to look more comprehensively at what we do. I think we need to put splash pads, I mean, we're working for two years to get one splash pad in. We've got to move faster with these splash pads and get them in all of our, nearly all of our parks, and especially near the pools. And then we need a comprehensive plan. I think this is a good start to keep a couple pools going. But we've got the aquatic study. We've got a lot of public comment. I think we need to work with the schools and find financing partners. We need to look at this more comprehensively than just repair the two pools. So this is a first step. But the whole concept of pools and only using them for a few weeks of the year, I got to say, as somebody who looks tightly at taxpayer money, this is not a good investment. And we can do better, and I think we need to do that, and we need to find those partnerships, and we need to find a year-round or some other way to educate. We need to get kids in water and make them water understanding and safe. But to spend so much money on such a short window of time, all taxpayer dollars from the city, I think we can do better.
Councilman Blood.
And I think the rest of the council is acutely aware that, that that's the priority, that we're not being shortsighted and say, let's just do two pools and then go on our merry way. This is a start, and we are all looking at the pennies. We are all looking at the budget. This is a band-aid that we have to pull right now. But again, I, I don't think anybody's in disagreement with Councilman Preister. I think we're just ready to move forward and do what we can do within the budget that we requested. And we're doing our jobs as councilpeople that represent the citizens. And everybody in different areas ha, are told different things. I know as the, at large, I've heard from everybody's word, and I'm hearing that parents want to see more amenities at the pools. I don't know if a water park is the answer, but I know the amenities that we are offering are pretty darn fun and that we should be proud of them. And I know that I will, for the remaining time that I'm on this council, will be looking at the pennies and will be looking at the budget and looking how we can get splash pads and other amenities, as I know the rest of the council people will.
Mr. Carmichael, did you, we have a motion and a second. We were in discussion. I'll call the vote. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this, Mr. Roberts. Item number six, liquor license. Six A, B&amp;B Classic Dogs. Application for special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during a Beer Garden 40th Class reunion at 1020 Lincoln Road on July 20th, 2016, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Is there anyone here from Classic Dogs? See none? I'll go ahead and open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission on the B&amp;B Classic Dogs Application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during the Beer Garden 40th Class reunion at 1020 Lincoln Road on July 23rd, 2016, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Second. Second by Councilmember Blood. Any discussion? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting on Item 6A and 6B for religious and personal reasons.
Any other discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. 6B, B&amp;B Classic Dogs LLC, doing business as B&amp;B Classic Dogs. Application for addition to the existing license, Class I liquor license located at 1020 Lincoln Road. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the B&amp;B Classic Dogs LLC, doing business as B&amp;B Classic Dogs. Their application for an addition to the existing Class I liquor license located at 1020 Lincoln Road.
Second. Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading. 7A, ordinance number 3848. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3848. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 3704, City of Bellevue subdivision ordinance relating to small subdivisions. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Mr. Carmichael.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 3848.
Second. Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
7B, ordinance 3849. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3849. An ordinance to amend Section 5.31, ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to the Old Town Overlay District. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 3849.
Second. Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for, for public hearing, second reading. 8A, ordinance 3850. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3850. An ordinance to amend Sections 22-1 and 22-2, and to add new Sections 22-3 through 22-11 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to fees charged for a license for persons engaged in the business of pawnbroking or chattel loanbroking in the City of Bellevue. To provide for the repeal of Sections 22-1 and 22-2 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
You. Councilman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that after the public hearing tonight, that we waive the third reading and vote on it this evening.
I'd make a second amendment.
Second by Mister Carmichael. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on 8A, please do so at this time. Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Blood.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 3850.
Second.
Second by Mister Carmichael. Any discussion? Seen none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 8B, ordinance 3851. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3851. An ordinance to amend Article 5 to Chapter 23 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to sales of second-hand goods in the City of Bellevue. To repeal Article 5 to Chapter 23 of the Bellevue City Code as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Councilman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that after the public hearing, that we waive the third reading and vote on this ordinance tonight.
Second.
Second by Mister Preister. Any discussion, questions? Seen none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so. Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Blood.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 3851.
Second.
Second by Mister Preister. Any discussion, questions? Seen none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading. 9A, ordinance 3852. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3852. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at 4705 and Giles Road, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Mister Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Normally, we don't have discussion on a first reading. I'd just like to explain because these issues are new to some of the folks. And at this point, a number of things could happen. But yet, generally, we have three readings so that the public on the first reading is notified something is coming. So if they have concerns, they can be prepared. The next meeting, there's a public hearing, and that gives people a chance to voice those concerns and opinions. And then it goes two more weeks to address any issues that may be there before it's finally voted on and either approved or not approved. In this case, some folks in the Faulkland Heights area thought that there might be a hearing tonight that they could speak at. I tried to get the word out to as many of them as I could, and I don't know if anybody came tonight. But I just want to make sure they know that the public hearing is in two weeks, and that tonight, even though on the previous one, we changed the rules, and we did vote, and anything can happen. But tonight, I don't expect we'll do anything other than read it in, give notice, and the public hearing will be in two weeks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. As stated by Mister Preister, the second reading and public hearing will be at the next meeting, June 27. 9B, ordinance 3853. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3853. An ordinance to amend Section 4.13, ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to accessory buildings and uses. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will also be on June 27. Item 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinance. 10A, public hearing on the event license application of the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. In the Riverfest Red, White, and Q 2016 Community Festival to be held at Hayworth Park and American Heroes Park on July 15, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. on July 16, 2016, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so. Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Mister Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing of the, or, public hearing of the event license application of the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce for the Riverfest Red, White, and Q 2016 Community Festival, to be held in Hayworth Park and American Heroes Park on July 15, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. in July 16, 2016, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Second. Second by Mister Prester. Any discussion? Seen none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 10A1, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation application for special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during the Riverfest Red, White, and Q 2016 Community Festival in Hayworth Park on July 15, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. till 2:00 a.m. in July 16, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Seen none. Close the public hearing. Councilman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for this Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation's application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during the Riverfest Red, White, and Q 2016 Community Festival in Hayworth Park on July 15, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. and July 16, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Second. Second by Mister Cook. Any discussion? Mister Modrie.
Thank you. Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting for this item again.
Okay. Please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item 10A2, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. Request for permission to have fireworks display at Hayworth Park on July 2016 in conjunction with Riverfest Red, White, and Q 2016 Community Festival. Open for public hearing on this item at this time. Anyone wishing to speak? Please do so. Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Mister Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion for approval of the requests for permission to have fireworks display at Hayworth Park on July 16, 2016, in conjunction with Riverfest Red, White, and Q 2016 Community Festival.
Second.
Second by Mister Carmichael. Any discussion? Seen none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 10B, public hearing, approval of the final plat for Lot 76 and 133, and Outlet E, Cedar Grove. Applicant, hi, Boyer Young Development, location 48 Street and Birchwood Drive. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant Boyer Young Development, really here to answer any questions that you might have. This is the final plat. It conforms to the preliminary plan. It comes to you with favorable recommendations from the department as well as the planning commission. So here for questions.
Seen none from the council. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so. Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the final plat for Lot 76 through 133, and Outlet E, Cedar Grove, applicant Boyer Young Development, location 48 Street and Birchwood Drive.
Second.
Second by Mister Prester. Any discussion? Seen none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Councilman Blood.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Cedar Grove subdivision agreement.
Second.
Second by Mister Prester. Discussion or questions? Seen none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 10C, public hearing on the request of SID 243 Clear Waters Falls to expend $221,165.20 for trail improvement. Go ahead and open public hearing. Oh, welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of SID number 243 of Serpice County, here to answer any questions. I think the scope of the work and the costs are pretty clearly set forth in the resolutions before you tonight. So I'm just here to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Seen none. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Mister Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the request of SID 243 Clear Water Falls to expend $221,165.20 for trail improvements.
Second. Mister Shuchuk.
That would just be a motion to approve Resolution 2016-13.
Should we add that to the motion?
I will. Make that the motion to approve Resolution 2016-13.
I second the amendment.
And that is in the amount of the same as I stated, $221,165.20.
Any discussion, questions? Seen none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 10D, public hearing on the revised Emerald Ash Bore Response Plan. Mister Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. The council may be glad to know I won't go into the litany of information I did last meeting. But I would add a couple of things because, as most people know, the World Herald reported very well, and other reports, social media was a buzz. The Emerald Ash Bore is identified as being in South Omaha. It was found, and interestingly enough, one of our tree board members, Graham Erbs, former tree board member, one of the original ones, even before he was hired by the state, is the young man who found and identified it and sent it to the state lab to be verified. So he and many others have been looking for it, not wanting to find it, but it's here. And now, like it or not, we have to deal with it. It will be costly. To Bellevue's credit, in our strategic plan, the council and administration wanted to have a plan developed. To the credit of our tree board members, Dave Anson, who's here with us tonight, Mariana Anderson, Tom Bentley, Joe Sempek, Joanne Langaby, and Craig Kimball have put together this plan that's before us. I want to thank Councilman Cook for his help in refining it since the last meeting, Councilman Carmichael for his input, administration, and others in doing it. I also thank Sabrina because she had some challenges in trying to reconfigure some things that the computer wasn't cooperating with. So it is, I think, in pretty good shape. All of the suggestions were incorporated, a couple of which I wasn't totally comfortable with. But being in elective office is the art of compromise, and I know how to compromise, and I did so. One thing that didn't get straightened out, and I will, I've spoken to Sabrina about it, and it's basically the computer program just didn't allow it to happen. But on the very last page, there's a duplication. One thing is listed twice. And so when I make my motion, I will ask Sabrina to delete the second one, the last item that's also the first item in those bullet points. But to list, to actually list the first one because it was, had the correct information in it, a couple of small things. So, two other things that I will mention before going into the public hearing. One, in most people's OPPD outlets brochure a while back and ongoing, people were warned to be careful because there's a lot of scams going around about treating trees, and about what you need to do with your elm, with your ash trees. And it's essentially buyer beware. Be careful. There will be lots of people coming into town. There will be lots of people trying to sell you things. And I would advise everyone to go to the state website and to look at what the state forest service is saying, because they will give you the most accurate and up-to-date information. As far as we know, there is no cure. The treatments can stave off and keep the bore from entering the tree for a time. But they're not going to prevent it. They will hold it off, but you will have to continually treat year after year. Some of the treatment will last as long as two years. The injections are going to damage the tree, and enough injections will kill the tree almost the same as the ash bore. So be cautious of what you spend your money for. And I would suggest not to put any hopes in the parasites that have been released in other states. We have oftentimes played God and released things, and Mother Nature has had other ideas of consequences that we didn't anticipate. So whether those parasites that have been released are going to be effective, or whether they're going to be effective and then do other harm, we just have no idea at this point. So for right now, I urge the public to be cautious, to be careful, to go to the Bellevue website because I think once we pass this, our responsibility is to provide the public as much education and information as we can. Go to the state forest service website, and you'll find some links on the Bellevue website to get you that information and as much information as we have available. With that, Mayor, if you would like to open up to public comment? Thank you.
We'll do that. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing at this time.
I am Dave Anson, a member of the tree board. And of course, I support this issue very well. And I would like to remind people that I, and I'm old enough to have dealt with the Dutch elm disease. I treated lots of trees because I was working with trees at that time. I don't think a single one was saved. So I mean, Don's mention of the futility of trying to treat a disease like this has been experienced in the past. Another thing that I think we need to make the public aware of is that the ash, although it is on the hard side of trees as far as wood, it is not a long, stable wood. So that once the ash tree dies, and I've had, I have several ash trees that are over two-foot diameter, once it dies, it will not stand real long. So the problem is, it becomes a danger to the public and to structures and everything around that. I don't think most people are aware of that. That's all I have to say. If there's any questions, I'm just not an expert. But we've worked real hard on this. And of course, now it's going to be in effect. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work there, Mister Anson. Are there others? Seen none. I'll close the public.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. I've been reading a little bit, and I'm not sure if it's in the plan or not, but isn't Iowa doing something about wrapping the trees with cellophane or something, or plastic? Is that, is that one of the solutions that you guys have come up with? The other one, what is, what is Omaha doing? I know they're putting a lot of money into a budget to try to solve this problem. I'm just wondering if you're incorporating any of those things at all.
Mister Prester.
Mister Frederick, the city of Omaha has been doing what they call Ash Wednesday for at least a year. And it's a catchy name, those of us that understand it. And that means that on Wednesdays, they've dedicated their parks workers to go out and actually cut down the ash trees. So they've been cutting down all of the trees that are already in weakened condition, that aren't in very good shape. They're eliminating the whole source so that the bug has fewer trees to infect. There are experimental things, including wraps, and they're experimental. There's no assurance that they work. And if a bug can go through bark, I don't think they'll have too much problem with going through a little bit of plastic. I don't know that for sure. But at this point, there are 25 states that have been infected before this beetle got here, and none of them have found a solution yet. So I'm not sure what's going to happen. But I'm expecting nature's going to run its course, and that it would be good for people who have ash trees to get educated, and after that, to plant a new tree near the ash tree to be prepared. that, to plant a new tree near the ash tree to be prepared.
Are there others? Not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Preister.
Mayor, with that, I would move that these, and I'll ask Mr. Sullivan, we will be adopting the response plan, and so the motion would be to adopt, and at that point, then... Mr. Sullivan, the motion would be to adopt, and then at that point, this plan would be adopted and approved by the council for staff to follow through. Is that...
Correct, as revised.
Yes, and I, should I, in the first motion, just add that amendment, or should I make an actual amendment?
It was already in its revised form, other than we had some duplication, right?
I see what you're saying.
So I would just go to it, be revised with the elimination of the duplicated language?
Okay. With that, I will make the motion to approve the revised Emerald Ash Bore Response Plan with the inclusion of the elimination of the duplication.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any questions, comments? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 11, resolution none. 12, current business. 12A is under consent. 12B authorized the administration and the mayor to appropriate action, implement the fleet fuel card. Mr. Severson, did you want to say a few words? No. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12C, approval of the long-distance telephone contract with landline phones with SentryLink. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any questions? See none, please, oh, Mr. Preister.
Just one, just one, Mayor. I think all of our staff have cell phones, and most people are using cell phones for all their long distance. I'm just wondering at some point in the future, if we need long-distance service, some offices maybe, but for the long-distance calls we make, maybe using cell phones in the future might save us some money.
Chief Betts, would you like to comment?
See if I can answer that. Currently, we actually use, we have our own phone switch, which is actually run on a T1, and I'm not getting too technical. We only run about $120 to $200 a month in total long distance. I would say the majority of the police department, a lot of things they just want to do on a hard line, or call the landline. So we still need that at your office desk phone, and that runs the, that's for the entire city. And Windstream no longer will allow us to add, we buy numbers in lots of 20, the actual number, for about 15 cents a month, and then we add long distance that. And some of the numbers we have, we don't even add long distance if they're at a place in a, that, that public access, we don't do that. But I don't know in the foreseeable future, probably not in my tenure here, that we'll, we'll get rid of that, but you, you are right, the majority of the long distance is probably done on cell phones, and it is free with the service.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12D, approval of the training affiliation agreement with Nebraska Medicine and the Bellevue Fire Department. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12E, 2016 overlay projects. 12E1, approval of the low responsive responsible bid from Western Engineering in the amount of $1,896,503.20 for the 2016 overlay project and approve the mayor to sign the contract. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve in the amount of $1,896,503.20 for the 2016 overlay project and also for the mayor to approve the sign, approve and sign the contract.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12C, 12, 12E2, approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement of E verification between the city of Bellevue and Alfred Benich and Company for the construction engineering services of the 2016 overlay project in the amount not to exceed $74,480. Councilman Blood.
Motion for the mayor to sign the agreement and E verify between the city of Bellevue and Alfred Benish and Company for construction engineering services for the 2016 overlay project in amount not to exceed $74,480.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of the agreement for cost sharing between the city of Bellevue, $20,304.42, and the city of Omaha, $20,000 for the resurfacing project on Harrison Street from 13th Street to Railroad Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve the agreement for cost sharing between the city of Bellevue, $20,304.42, and the city of Omaha, $20,000 for the resurfacing project on Harrison Street from 13th Street to Railroad Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's not a big deal, but I just have a question. Why did we end up paying $304 more than Omaha?
Mr. Roberts?
Excuse me. Probably had to do with, we had maybe an additional ADA ramp to put in, or some appearance like that.
So there was a little bit more on our side.
Little bit more on our side, yes, correct.
Any more discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12F, approval of the contract and scope of service for professional GIS mapping and services between the city of Bellevue and Midland GIS Solutions, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract and E verify. Councilman Blood?
Motion to approve and have the mayor, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract and E verify.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any questions, discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12G, request permission to purchase six zero turn mowers for the Parks Department using the NAPSO contract not to exceed $76,000. Councilman Blood?
Motion to approve not to exceed $76,000.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12H, Pleasant Hills Gravity Sewer. 12H1, request permission to seek bids from qualified contractors for the Pleasant Hills Gravity Sewer and Lift Station Abudment Project.
That's consent.
Oh, that one's under consent, so item number two is approval of the temporary construction easement in favor of the city over part of lot, tax lot F and tax lot G located in Section 21-T14-N, R13-E, Sarpy County, Nebraska, more particularly described in attachment A to the, to construct and install a water pipe for the purpose of delivering wastewater across, through, and under the land. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the approval of the temporary construction easement in favor of the city and as just described by the mayor.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? Mr. Preister.
Just briefly, I'm wondering, Jeff, on, on all of this, it, we're cutting through a farmer's ground, going through the pasture, we're going to be pretty disruptive. That old lift station was there when I was a kid. It's got to be ancient because I am, so I'm, I'm thinking it's long overdue being replaced, but I'm, I'm just, how soon can they do it, and what, what are we looking at? Because they've got animals out there and pasture and...
Yeah, that was all, I'm sorry, that was all part of the negotiation as far as getting these easements, about how the city would be responsible for putting their pasture back the way it is today before anything is done to it. It takes into concessions the animals that they have on it. But this project here is we're actually abandoning a lift station, taking it out of service, and gravity feeding, so we don't have to spend, you know, $200,000 to put a new lift station in.
No, it's a good plan. It's a good project. Do you have any idea, once you put this out for bid, when we might get somebody working on it? I'd end up having to check with...
Can you come to the microphone, please, Dean? Thank you.
Sorry, Dean.
I know you prefer not to, but...
And I'm just thinking, you've got a construction season, but they've got a, a feeding season, and they would hopefully want to get the pasture all planted late in this season so it's growing in the spring, and also missing rainy seasons, and there's just a lot of variables. You're the engineer, you know that, but I'm just advocating for what's best for these folks.
Yeah, I apologize for speaking from the audience, but I'd have to check the actual timetable with our wastewater operations manager, Epiphany Ramos, and I can get that information to council as soon as tomorrow.
And, and basically, if, if they could be working sometime around early September, I think that would fit the property owners, but however it works for your schedule, they said that Epiphany was very good to work with. Everybody that's come out has been good. They never felt anything was heavy-handed or pushed on them. They were able to negotiate and put things in to look out for their property, and I think that's to the credit of the city staff. You, Epiphany, all the public work, so I want to pass that on from them. They just want to make sure that everything that's there works as best it can, because when you bring heavy equipment in, you start tearing things up, it can get out of hand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Modri.
Yes, thank you. On the cover sheet, it says this is $7,000 over budget. Is, is that correct, or...
These are all taken as a whole. This is one project.
Right.
And as they came in sequentially, Jeff and I talked about them, and I think if you notice, the first one is budgeted for $200,000, and we're estimating $250,000.
Yeah.
So that one's over budget.
Yeah.
Therefore, each of the rest of them have to be over budget.
Budget as well.
So that's why.
Okay. I think the other four after, well, all of them together...
Total of 87,000 estimated right now. If it comes in under, that will go down. If they wouldn't have come in sequentially, it was going to be easier, made the decision, I'd get up here, take a 30 seconds and explain it versus having Jeff go back and redo all of the documents. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item three, approval of a permanent sanitary sewer easement in favor, favor of the city over the part of tax lot F and tax lot G located in Section 21-T14-N, R13-E, Sarpy County, Nebraska, more particularly described in attachment A to construct and install water pipe for the purpose of delivering wastewater across, through, and under the land. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the permanent sanitary sewer easement in favor of the city over part of tax lot F and tax lot G located in Section 21 Township 14 North, Range 13 East, Sarpy County, Nebraska, more particularly described in attachment A to construct and install a wastewater pipe for the purpose of delivering wastewater across, through, and under the land.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item four, approval of a temporary construction easement in favor of the city over that part of Lot 24A Pleasant Hill Martin subdivision, more particularly described in attachment A to construct and install wastewater pipe for the purpose of delivering wastewater across, through, and under the land. Mr. Carmichael.
Thanks. I'd like to make a motion to approve of the temporary construction easement in favor of the city over that part of Lot 24A Pleasant Hill Martin subdivision, more particularly described in attachment A, construct and install a wastewater pipe for the purpose of delivering wastewater across, through, and under the land.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any questions, comments? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Five, approval of the permanent sanitary sewer easement in favor of the city over the part of Lot 24A Pleasant Hill Martin subdivision, more particularly described in attachment A to construct and install wastewater pipe for the purpose of delivering wastewater across, through, and under the land. Councilman Blood?
Motion to approve the permanent sanitary sewer easement in favor of the city over that part of Lot 24A Pleasant Hill Martin subdivision, more particularly described in attachment A to construct and install a water, wastewater pipe for the purpose of delivering wastewater across, through, and under the land.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12I, recommend exception of, acceptance of a proposal for full open data portal to be implemented by Socrata in the amount of $32,500 the first year, $25,000 for subsequent years. Mr. Burks.
Good evening, everyone. Just as a reminder to the viewers, I'm Larry Burks, the Assistant City Administrator for, for Bellevue. I had the privilege of putting this information together. The city of Bellevue has identified transparency as an initiative and adopted an open data policy this year, and we have hopes to implement it this year in 2016. The city of Bellevue issued an RFI to learn more about open data portal providers. The Technology Committee has reviewed these RFIs and my analysis and comparison, which you have before you. The committee was asked to provide a recommendation regarding portal providers. As mentioned, on April 4th, an RFI was issued regarding open data portals. On May 4th, the city had received three RFIs from three qualified companies. Administration also included a fourth company since we had been looking at their services for a couple of years now. On June 6th, the Technology Committee met to discuss the RFIs in my comparison report, and the Technology Commis, Committee consisted of City Councilwoman Carol Blood, Community Relations Director Phil Davidson, Administration's Executive Secretary Lisa Rybar, the Library Director Julie Denville, and myself. All of you have a binder, and on page two of that binder, you'll see the schedule, the RFI comparison. As you can see, we're moving right on schedule according to the calendar. And inside your binders, you'll also find the same information that the Technology Committee reviewed prior to the meeting, my synopsis, the comparison of the RFIs, each RFI submitted, including the ICMA Insights, and also you should have received a copy of Councilwoman Blood's notes as well. At the conclusion of the meeting, the Technology Committee was in general agreement that if the council determines the need for a fully interactive, open data portal, then Socrata would be the best value. On page 26 of the binder of the RFI comparison in that first tab, there is a breakdown of the costs, and just for your reference, I would also like to thank the Technology Committee and everyone who participated in this for their hard work, and I would be happy to do my best to answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you. Either Councilwoman Blood or Larry, this isn't in the current budget, correct?
Right. When we discussed this at previous council meetings, we had discussed this as being part of community betterment, because we thought it would create an effective tool for saving taxpayer money, as well as any, a strong economic development tool which would make us a leader in Nebraska, based on the conversation that we had at the previous council meeting.
And do we anticipate putting this in the full budget in the next biennial session?
That would be up to council.
You won't be here.
In the, I won't be here, that's what I'm saying, so, I mean, I'm looking at you guys.
I was directed to you.
Well, again, it's up to council.
Steve, I guess it just depends how soon you decide if we go forward, how soon. If it's something the council approves to move forward at this point, if it's not a budgeted item, however, there have been some items that have come up that have been approved out of community betterment, and that's what's being proposed. So I guess you have two ways. You move forward now and agree to take it out of community betterment, even though it wasn't budgeted at the time, or I guess if you choose a way, at that point, it probably... Or I guess if you choose the way, at that point, it probably would be in the budget, one or the other. So it all depends on which way you choose to go.
My point is, I don't want this to be a continual draw on the community betterment fund. I think this should be a budgeted item that we evaluate every year.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, Steve. The, the only commitment that you'd be looking at, though, that if you're going to go with a full open portal, the initial cost of doing so is gonna be thirty-two five. And as it indicates, there's, for the next two years subsequent, there'd be twenty-five thousand, which is a, a fee to Socrata. We have to use our software and continue to use it. So, I mean, going past that, if, that clearly would be in a timeframe where we'll be into a new biennial budget. And our intent always is, at that point, to capture any of those costs and make sure then they're reflected.
Councilman Blood?
Actually, your two is twenty-four thousand sixteen, not to correct you, and it's, I know it sounds like pennies.
I was just rounding.
But I also wanna say, too, that should we choose to do a three-year contract, we can negotiate these prices a little bit, too. And it would be the anticipation that after the three years, you would not use community betterment and you would, you would put it in the budget because it's going to be a cost-saving measure. It's not gonna be something you're gonna draw. I mean, once you move forward on this, this is gonna be so beneficial, and that's why you were savvy enough to approve the open data policy to start with. So for me, the goal is to move forward as, as, as speedily as possible because we're really already behind communities of our size, and we're always talking about how we wanna be first in Nebraska and we wanna lead the way, and this is our opportunity to do so.
Mr. Cook?
If, if we move forward on this, is this first thirty-two thousand gonna be taken out of the current budget? Or can we push that?
Community betterment.
Community betterment, or can we push that to after October first to pay that thirty-two thousand five hundred? And if it's gonna come out of this year and then twenty-five thousand out of next year, I would ask that we, before October first, we, we find where this money can come out of. Do we have it versus just relying on community betterment for the next three years? We, we had talked about, if necessary, you know, we got a two-year budget. If necessary, we can always look at things, and we need to make some adjustments. That can always happen before October first. So I'm just asking is that if we're gonna pay the thirty-two five out of this year budget, can we reconsider and look and see where we can find the twenty-five thousand for the next year? Versus waiting till the next new budget, two-year budget?
Okay, well, to answer that, the best I can. In terms of, we still have to negotiate a contract. So you're just approve, accepting the proposal. Carol said we clearly always try to negotiate fees. We'll have to bring a contract back. By the time we get it negotiated and bring it back for your approval, I would suspect on all likelihood, the thirty-two five will come out of the next year of a second, of a two-year budget. Remember, we're in a two-year budget. We're almost near eight months into the first year. I would anticipate, and I'm sure we can always negotiate timing, where the thirty-two five can come out of that, that, after October. In April, about a year, well, in April of next year, we'll begin launching into preparing a new budget, biennial budget. We can always look at that time for a source to pick up the subsequent twenty-four, whatever, approximate twenty-five thousand. I can't guarantee that, though. I mean, we would always look, but I guess we'd have to, at that point, determine where we're gonna find it, where we're gonna take it. I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna cut into an existing service that's important to fund it. But again, that would, could always be part of the dialogue we have when we get into the next biennial. If we can find another source or we can spread it among departments, we can look at that. I can't guarantee it at this point, but I have no problem with looking at it.
Well, for me personally, is that, and I, there's gonna be many, many more projects coming down the road that we're gonna look at community betterment funds. I just think in this particular case, we've had several months, we've been talking about this for several months. We talked about it in strategic planning and probably maybe even before that. My only concern is, I will accept this and to move forward on this, but I think we've had plenty of time to try to find the money available. And I'm gonna, in my mind, my feeling is that that thirty-two five will come out of next year's budget, and I would still ask that we try to find the money. We had Mr. Severson up here talking about how we were moving through the budget year and a couple million dollars and, and things were looking good. I realize things can change overnight, have a disaster or some horrible event in the city, but I think we, instead of always taking the easy way out, community betterment, community betterment, let's try to find between now and October first where this money can come out of and, and, and then go forward with that. Thank you.
Councilman Blood?
I, I just wanna thank the other council members for having an open mind. I know that this was outside of some people's comfort levels because it's not something you deal with every day, but I, I give kudos to everybody that sees the big picture and sees the long-term benefits of this. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the council members that had been supporting this.
Mr. Burlowitz?
And I guess just to, to end it on a note, I'm, Paul, we'll, we'll try to find it. Again, I can't guarantee it on that. It, in relationship, obviously, one of the things we're doing in the way of trying to be good managers of our budget, ultimately, that always impacts the next biennial budget. The better we do, the, the better position we're in going forward when we're putting together a new proposal. I, the thirty-two five at this point will need to come out of community betterment, 'cause we don't have another source. Going forward with the others, I, I can assure you, we definitely will look. Like I said, I can't promise, but I clearly hear your concern. I understand it, so we will do our best.
And before this is all done, will I have one more vote on it? The final, final vote.
You, you will have a contract that will need to come back at that point, which is.
So I'll have another vote.
You'll have another vote, yes. You'll have another vote on a contract, and hopefully, maybe we can, the figure will be lower. We'll see.
Mr. Sullivan?
I'm trying to gather my thoughts on where we're at on this. And I think the easiest thing for you to do, if you wanna move forward, is just make a recommended acceptance of the proposal, the full data portal to Socrata, subject to approval of the contract, and don't even mention anything about the community betterment funds at this point.
Councilman Blood?
Motion to approve what he just said.
Did you get that, Sabrina? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any other questions, concerns, discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, City Administrator's Report. Comments must be limited to items on the current City Administrator's Report. Mr. Burlowitz?
Staff and I will try to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? See none. Moving on to item number fourteen, Public Request to be Heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states, "Any statement made during the city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, city official, or an employee or a member of the general public and City Code Section two dash six eight regarding the manners of addressing the council." Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
All right. Good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak at the meeting. I'll keep this brief. I've already forwarded information in the form of a flyer to Sabrina, and it's also on the table out there by the agenda. My name is David Famaletti, six nine one seven Wright Plaza, and I'm here on behalf of Strategic Professional Resources Incorporated. It's located at fourteen oh six Fort Crook Road South here in Bellevue. And I'm here to formally invite the council and members of the Bellevue Committee, or Community, attending this meeting and watching through various media channels to participate in the second annual SPR Inc. Open at Willow Lakes Golf Course, benefiting the Disabled American Veterans Charity Organization. Disabled American Veterans has the goal of assisting those who have sustained life-altering injuries during their time of service and have sacrificed for our safety, security, and freedom. The golf outing will be held at noon Friday, July fifteenth, and it's open to anyone who's interested. There are opportunities for teams of four to play in the scramble and for local businesses and groups to sponsor aspects of the event that also include having a team. And the open itself, we're all really excited about it, 'cause it's gonna provide an opportunity for friends and family to participate in the event. Businesses and groups are gonna be highly visible to the community, and most importantly, it's gonna benefit a great cause. If members of the council or local community are interested, feel free. Our offices are four zero two nine nine one seven five eight two. And again, the contact information is featured on the flyer. Again, council, thanks a lot for your time. I'd look forward to seeing the great things our community achieves. Thank you.
Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. We all know it's really pretty hot out here outside, has been for the last couple of days. But I'm kinda hot under the collar, too, because for the last month, two meetings, I've been talking about how much money the rescue squad, the fire department's lost by having them do the bill, rescue squad billing. I've said three point four million, and I think it's probably more than that. That would've been enough to help pay for a pool, enough for some, for more, hiring some more firemen. It's, it's our revenues that we could've been getting and we haven't gotten. I'm disappointed because I have not heard from any appointed official, any elected, elected official, or the media. I mean, isn't three point four million kinda a lot of money not to have in the last four years? All you gotta do is look at the audit report on that page, and they'll tell you they've done a bad job. I'm not gonna go further than that, but I was gonna bring up a couple of other things, too, because I'm just bewildered why somebody hasn't looked in this further and tried to give us more money. The, you can look in this, my Chuck, on my website, too, at ChuckFrederick.com. But the other thing is, I was gonna bring up just for, just to mention it, that besides that being a very bad decision of taking the, the rescue squad billing away from Pat Shannon's Cash Flow Billing Company, the other one that's, I think, was a pretty bad situation, too, is when we leased the cell towers for four, for forty years. And that's on my website also, an article by Eugene Curtins on my website about that. But what I'm curious about, maybe I haven't seen it, but I'd like to see how much, we're supposed to be getting half, fifty percent of the, of the new revenues from the cellphone tower, and I haven't seen that. We were getting two hundred thousand dollars a year before we leased it, and it was gonna be more because they're gonna put more things on there. And I, I don't, I'd like to, I'd like to find out how much of that money we're, how much additional money we're getting, 'cause at this point, I don't see any in, in the financials. The other thing, too, was that just before the primary, the day before the primary, we had a city council meeting, and a gentleman got up and spoke, read an article from, from the World Herald about, about somebody who's running for city council. And I was a little surprised that you let it go on, but seeing you let that go on, I just wanna say that I am endorsing Pat Shannon. He run, he won the primary. He's gonna be a person who will be a, has financial expert and will really help out this city a lot, and so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilman Blood?
Since the fire billing is in the City Administrator's Report, I just wanna point out that the fire billing information is included in the City Administrator's Report and that I find it exhausting that we refer to a company that we let go, who also was let go by Lincoln for misbilling emergency services. And that is documented in public information. I'm not giving an opinion, I'm sharing facts, so I just wanna point that out to anybody who might be listening to this, and I can't go beyond that because that would be breaking the rules.
That fact is wrong.
Are there others?
You may say it's a fact, but it's wrong.
There are others? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Item number fif, fifteen, Executive Session. Councilwoman Blood?
For the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual, I move to go into Executive Session to discuss negotiations with outside agencies to market Old Town city-owned properties and discussion of litigation matters with a former police chief.
I need a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. It is now seven forty-six. We will go into Executive Session where our discussion will be restricted to, as stated by Councilmember Blood.